Fish. We passed the deadline.
No, I think it's um.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. Yeah, because the holiday was on Wednesdays with Thursdays, so last day.
Yeah, I I think again, part of what we're seeing is folks know to put their tree out, but they're not recognizing the fact they have, they can't be flock trees, they can't have that net over them.
Yeah.
The the big thing is they need stands on, you know, at the bottom. And then they can't pick those up. So I I think that's something for us to think about next year. It is magnifying that as a Gina Morris. We want your trees, just make sure they're clean.
And and um. All right.
Are you?
You are picking up trees over state and such, chief.
Pardon?
Are you still picking up trees with stains? At this.
Our our policy is not true, but we I can tell you we have them because we end up cooking back and yeah, so might as well just stay on the.
Time to go back to second.
That's a call and you're you guys are the it's appreciated. I mean, I the second trip is.
It's wasteful, it's wasteful. We don't have any trees or fully decorated, but.
Really? You see any collector ones? There are are the ones that say first Christmas together and then.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, thank David, are you finished? Are you?
I'm I'm finished. Do you have any further questions? To answer later? All right, thank you. Thank you, David. All right, uh. It's good item two then.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Norris Pareda, our senior management analyst, be given this report.
Good morning, President. Good morning. Before you is H H W collection data, a program data for the past six fiscal years. With this program, as you know, customers may request up to three H H W pickups per calendar year. Uh, for items like household batteries, sharps, paint chemicals, um, electronic waste, and each pickup does allow twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-five pound or twenty-five. Sorry, quick take down. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, there were eight hundred and four uh requests completed. That includes five hundred and ten that were for e-waste and two hundred and ninety-four that were for other types of H H W items. This is pretty similar to um collections for the previous year. In this last fiscal year, the pickups were typically completed with wi- within one week. Um, and we did receive minimal complaints with this program. This concludes my report and having to answer any questions that you have. And I did actually just remember you inquired about fire extinguishers yesterday. Yes, the program does need fire extinguishers as long as they're empty. Uh, and then they do ask that the nozzle be removed. So the little plastic portions that you actually spray, that that be removed. Um, and the county collection centers do ultimately require extinguishers.
With the same parts.
They don't specify on their website. They actually put a pound limit, a forty-pound limit. I would assume the same um requirement would apply, but I haven't I haven't uh told them to verify that.
Now, that credit for that tonnage for. Waste now?
No, because it goes H H W.
So try.
I know.
Been in part of the city, um, so I'm curious to know if they get that data because I haven't seen any data from the county reporting what comes in from customers in the city up close to Mesa. Um, so I was gonna inquire with them to see if they're getting that report. I imagine they are, but I don't know that there's a way to distinguish between multifamily and single family on that report.
If if it's a report to the city, um, will commercial H H W be included?
So the the I must let me take residential, but I don't think they would distinguish between their residential customers and our residential customers. That's the only thing that.
Oh, wait, how will? How will you find out that information from?
I don't know. I have a meeting later today with the city, so I was gonna comply with them.
There's something you can credit for that. Just remember, we worked for like eight years to get O C Cs, but we finally got it. Which is significant for us.
So when we report data to counter cycle, it is through the city's report? So if we're giving them what we have to report and then they're probably reporting that data and then it's all being combined in one report that goes to the counter cycle.
Yeah, but we still report it to ourselves, you know, which is important for us because we're trying to set it first. Second.
Sure. Any other questions?
Um. Is it easy enough to get? You you know, like when we did the recycling, we listed what could go in the cans. Is there a way to get a list of what items are eligible for H H W?
We do have a list um on our website, the kind of outline everything. Are you thinking of a like a providing list in another format?
I think the most common question we get from our police side yet are, what do I do with my my balls? You know, the Florida's online balls. What I do, what do I do with my own TVs? Uh, they're included in H H W.
It is, yeah. It does list like electronic waste, for example, then it specifies televisions and all the different sorts of electronic waste.
Yeah, it it. I apologize for not looking on the. And does it specifically say don't put batteries in there? You know?
In oh, in the the trash card, in the landfill card?
In H H W.
Oh, you can collect batteries with H H W.
I thought we.
You can, you can do door door.
Missed that. I apologize. Thanks, thanks. You're.
Yeah. But there is a list, um, I put it down here for reference, but there is a list that has
All things.
e-waste and then all the different sorts and household chemicals and sharps and everything listed.
Good. Um, that might be is. Already was talking about the newsletter. We might do a special article coming up soon with about H H W. That's a pretty valuable program that we have.
Sure.
I've not every city does that, do they? Like, you know, they don't, or jurisdictions only. Um, that's a valuable thing. I mean, I I've had friends in other cities that have to cart that stuff over to Rainbow or where.
Long Beach.
Yeah, so that might be a highlight article or something we could do for the baseline.
All right, bye. Mike, do you know? Um, what types of batteries or are the batteries that you cause when it's trash truck fires?
It's usually the little button batteries or the um uh uh lithium. Lithium battery.
A little tiny round.
A round little round.
It's a little, yeah. Well, they connect with something else metallic and spark the fire.
Really?
Any other questions?
Well, that might be included in the information for the um newsletter.
What about don't get bigger than the site for the? Appliances. You know, bigger than the site. For those of you. Uh, like for edgers, things like that.
Yeah, for the they are.
Yeah.
Blue and thought.
Yeah, here the other one. Or Mike get like the. Because we talked about you guys have on the newer trucks sprinkler system for the wedding down fires. How many trucks have that now? All of the new.
Thank you, Mike.
Sorry, you know.
Number steps. All of the the newer trucks have those. I think anything that we bought in the last five years has that system.
Is that working pretty good?
It's it works really well, so uh to clarify those that mean not know. Previously, if there's a truck fire, the driver has to stop, eject the entire room wherever wherever he is. I've seen two of them here close to Mesa, right here Theodore Robbins board one Saturday. I hope the guys remain up. Geese LaRat was popular too.
Yeah.
Um, but then the fire department has to come and literally use a uh saw to cut into the side of the truck to be able to extinguish the fire. The newer trucks have a connection on the outside where a fire hose can connect directly to the truck. Extinguish the flames. Plus, there's a sprinkler system inside that can be activated when that's the hose is connected that waters the load down from the inside, not not necessitating ejecting the load or cutting into the body of the truck.
Well, I think I'm supposed to know anything. What's representing for these trucks?
I'm trying to think, but you're saying the age of it, probably half the trucks have that, okay? That shows the next. I just find.
Just out of curiosity, so the water is in the truck, extinguishes the the fire, whatever. Doesn't that now become toxic waste?
I don't, we don't just, it's it's not possible.
No. If you know, they're talking about one of the big problems up in L A is all this. Of course, there's a lot of push stuff that burn up there, but uh we talked about one of the big problems in, you know, remedying the stuff up there is gonna be toxic. I had a I had a customer once that had a fire. It was in the San Diego fire, if you remember fifteen, twenty, whatever it was. The swimming pool got filled with debris and that had to be disposed of through toxic collection. So I it's just a side curiosity.
Not from the residential loads. Not to the extent like the the hang the fires.
Yeah, those were tops.
Yeah.
You keep track of the the extra signage?
Thanks, Mike. Anything else on this subject? Thank you. Okay, item three.
Uh, yes, Norris should be giving this report as well.
Good morning, everyone. Um, so each year, the uh each of district staff conducts a performance review of C R N R's contract compliance and performance satisfaction. Sixty-three performance categories are rated using the grades excellent, satisfactory, unsatisfactory, and not applicable. For this last fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, C R N R received three excellent, forty-three satisfactory, five unsatisfactory, and twelve that were not applicable. The three excellent ratings um convince C R N R for superior service provided by their customer service designation for the H H W collection program and the annual compost and shredding event. The five unsatisfactory ratings identify unsatisfactory performance and need for improvement in the areas of color compensation data, monthly reporting, route reviews, liquidated damages, and missed pickups. All other categories were identified as satisfactory if standards were met or not applicable if there was nothing to report for this review period. The staff report has the summary of all of the grades and the attached performance review um outlines each of the categories in greater detail. This concludes my report and I'm available to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, more, I mean, why I discussed this. Uh, hey.
Well, I just have a question, Gary. What was last year's performance report for excellence?
So last year there were two excellent, um, and there were two unsatisfactory, the two unsatisfactory were large item pickup and community outreach, both of which have been um moved into the satisfactory category this year.
Um, I I think I think it's worthy to note that satisfactory is not a negative judgment or observation or any of. Um, when it's satisfactory, it's meeting the terms of our contract with them. And it's simply maybe not doing something extra or exemplary. I I I mean, uh, I I again, I think it's important that anybody who reads this needs to understand that satisfactory is where we really wanna be. So with that, I mean, uh, do you guys wanna talk about the unsatisfactory marks individually? Let's do that, um, starting with color compensation. Sorry. Unsatisfactory.
You want me to just kind of go over it or?
Just if you have quick on one in. And I think once we get him get done talking about the unsatisfactory, let's talk about what we're gonna do or what we can do so that they're not unsatisfactory next next review.
Sure. So for color compensation, um, this relates to the rate data that was provided by C R N R. Over the course of the rate study, we received um some proposed rates, the three-part rates from C R N R. We provided those to the research consultant. Um, and then after further studying with C R N R discovered that those numbers were not accurate, um, needed to be adjusted pretty significantly and that greatly altered the study. So there was the additional staff and consultant time to make that revision. And then there was quite a a big adjustment to the new rate, the new customer rate.
So the solution to that is making sure the rate's correct next year.
Right.
Is there some way that? I don't know if you wanna take some questions, Mike, or um if if there was a mistake, what do we do next year? Make sure that the rate is so accurate.
Uh, the rate that had originally been provided, uh, it was in respect to the the new recital card. The R P wasn't calculated into that rate. Um, that was.
Correct. It was the occupancy rate that was interesting.
Clearly, we we would mitigate that moving forward, but in this specific instance, it would be a non-issue because everything's been pulled out.
Okay. But next year we'll get, and next year you'll have a better. Or next year, you'll have a better. It'll be, it'll be, you'll acknowledge that that needs to be included.
Right.
It's been, so it's since been included, and because this was transitioning from the two-part to the three-part, this sort of rate adjustment won't occur until a new, you know, program.
Part.
Right, so it'll just be the C P I adjustment now.
When you guys, when we present this information to C R N R, do you guys meet together to just talk about it before you make a decision?
We provide them for a review and then C R N R provides their comments and feedback and then we evaluate that and make necessary changes if we feel um that it's warranted. Otherwise, it may define it.
When you say we use it, you, Scott, or who?
So the actual report is sent to Mike and Julie, yes, and Scott and I are involved in the process. Um, and then their comments come back. I mean, these are things we're dealing with on an ongoing.
I know, but when when they make their comments back, you don't agree with them or you?
It depends. So there were some accommodations that were made once their feedback was provided and there are some times where even with their additional feedback, the grade that was given stands and we don't um alter it. So it just depends on what the situations.
In all fairness, I think that we ought to have some kind of report that says this is the first time we're doing something like this and in doing it, we feel that it was satisfactory, but it hasn't occurred and it's, you know, talk about that a little more.
I I and I think part of that um maybe have to focus on the the unsatisfactories going forward.
Yes.
And I guess that the only the only test we're gonna have is next year when you do the review again.
Right.
You know, see if it was corrected. And I think that's that's.
And if we make a an opinion on it, we can say this is what we feel and we need to work on together.
And I think that's probably got gonna have to do with you guys when you meet with C R N R, go over the results. I think that's important.
I have a question. I have a question for Mike. Are you involved in a committee that is about this? You know, you know, I would do this.
No, it's. It. What's your committee? The solid waste committee? Wouldn't that be similar to like the discussion? I mean, you should be involved with the discussion of things. Uh, we can talk about that before next year's review period, I think, especially with the unsatisfactory.
Yeah.
You guys should be, because you guys meet as a committee. It's all often you guys meet. It's been a little while.
But it's it it's an ad hoc meeting, so it's supposed to be temporary. It's not supposed to be the point committee.
We are meeting with C R N R twice a month to go over any issues.
I always think you should have some board interaction with the decisions you guys make personally.
As far as the review is concerned or?
What, but but especially the unsatisfactories, and so they they get their input. I mean, I don't know. That's how I think. We we can, even the add-on committee could be established once a year when you're talking about these things. But I I think it'd be better to have the board interact with it to help with making the decisions personally.
And remember, Scott, I don't know how many years ago was that we had a few different standing committees. We had a solid waste committee and we had a
Operations.
Operating, remember, I just been a few years.
Those are standard committing, so um. I mean, definitely, we could get the input back from the board members about what was discussed and how we interpret it. You know, since right now, we still see them, we can report back.
Yeah, maybe it's something we can.
I think that'd be a wise idea for us going out for this next year.
Okay.
You know, if that's been working out, because you guys meet, you you can meet as not many anytime this need. And when the report comes back before we make decisions on unsatisfactors, you guys will be involved with it. I think that'd be a wise thing to do. That's just me. I haven't talked about it about this. I just.
No, no, I I mean.
Could could we do that next year, Scott?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you could. Your heart, the remarks, and the remarks could be both sides.
I'm just thinking about the unsatisfactory things is we have to make sure we have a deep understanding of what's happening.
Right.
Well, I think it's the best interest of both of us to have as few unsatisfactories as possible.
Exactly.
And you always want, that's always the goal. I'm.
I was.
Or get the remedy. Yeah.
Get remedy to that.
Okay.
And just to know, some of the items may have not been corrected during this review period but have since been corrected, so that will be reflected in next year's appointment.
When when did, what time of the year did you start this?
Um, end of the year, usually October, November.
So we could establish that add-up committees, when you're gonna use the one needed, right?
Yes.
So I would include the add-up committee when you're evaluating. That's my personal thing.
Yeah, that's I I that's. Better in the stairs. Okay, let's go to off the reports and those.
Okay, so for monthly reports, the reports are um expected to be submitted to the district by the seventh of each month. We did receive them by the seventh, I think, for eleven of the twelve months. Um, despite how they received the reports by the deadline, there were often errors with uh missing information, missing weight tickets, or reports that needed to be corrected. Um, so it does cost staff time to um kind of outline what's missing and what's needed and request that data and then reevaluate to be able to put that into the reports that are prepared and presented to the board. Um, so it was just, there was a significant issue, especially with weight tickets. We weren't receiving weight tickets um either at all or in a timely manner, or once we did receive them, they were significantly delayed. Um, that's an example of something that has since been corrected. So during this review period, it was still an ongoing issue at the end of June, but it has since been corrected.
Did you say that it was eleven out of twelve months were fine, just that one month?
Yes. So we received them by the deadline, but they weren't complete. So I mean, they were received, but technically they weren't because they weren't complete.
And this list, it's in the one staff report. The periods that were deficient, I.
The the graph, the chart?
No, um, in the actual staff report, it lists waste diversion, auto, the collar, master manifest, access to site. And from those are the areas you saw deficiencies, is that right?
I just wanna make sure you're not referring to the chart that's on the screen. That's in the report, it's in the staff report.
It's what I'm looking at is the the annual performance review.
Oh, the actual review.
The review.
Yeah. In which page are you on?
Uh, eight, five, and six. Where you break down.
Where you've got like a monthly reports is in red. Yeah, so the red is indicating that it was an unsatisfactory item. Those are each of the categories that fall under records reports to be used in.
Got it, okay.
Were they?
And the fix there is if you've already if if they've already made corrections, we know it's been.
The weight ticket um has been, the weight ticket errors been corrected, you just request that uh information sent be backward and complete.
Color. Uh, yes, for that, the the one month that's referenced in in the unsatisfactory rating, that's October twenty twenty-three. Um, we've got the data back, delayed for the uh diversion report that's one to follow with the reports of the. Um, I should mention that it it is kind of challenging for for us to provide reports to the district on the seventh of every month. It is usually a fantastic line, but it's it's a unique situation and all of our other reporting jurisdictions, reporting times is typically the twenty-fifth of the month. It is somewhat challenging for us to be able to get the data for the previous month and submit by the seventh. It's an extremely tight turnaround to be able to close out our month-end books and be able to extrapolate the data necessary to get reported by the seventh. So it's I do admit it is a challenge for us. Hope we're division.
But so the the communication lines and and see if we have some room to give.
I think because we make our payments.
Regarding payments, if you wanna get paid on time, we have to make that deadline. Otherwise, if you don't mind delaying the payment, we can do that.
Yeah, let's talk. Do we want our money or do we not?
Yeah, exactly, you know, so so get working, right? Get back on the seventh and we'll get it paid.
When is the seventh? All by Sunday. That should be. Gotta be some give and take on both sides here, so. How often do you write checks to C R N R? Like what?
Yeah, it's actually the board approval. The board has to prove it. Right, so but we but we have to take that time to evaluate and make sure everything's accurate. It takes some time on our end.
And then the staff report has to be submitted the week before.
And then we could say from the seventh to the twelfth or something, give them some flexibility.
Well, I get it. If we can, it's for us too. We need that time to do it, so I we have to look at it.
Yeah, I can just look if you get both sides. If you get eight, two days late.
It would be a month, because it wouldn't go to the board until the following.
So if you get paid a month late, it'll be, yeah, right.
Well, we don't, we don't have a board meeting still.
Right, so if we receive it, like, say, on January twenty-fifth, rather than going to the board for payment in January, like it would now, it wouldn't go to the board until February. Yeah.
There are, there are two months when the board meets early.
Yeah.
Um, December, maybe, think, maybe November.
Or or if it's a conference.
Well, I I I'm just saying, I understand both sides. I it's pretty clear on both sides, but there's always gotta be a little. There's gotta be some on both sides, some compromise, there's some conciliations on both sides, so. This this should be when it fits.
You know, I think we can manage it pretty well and miss that one one. One of those reports out of how many other? Four, twelve reports, right? In the packet. We did take a long one.
It's a little flexibility, yes. Okay, uh, next one, what are, what's the next group?
So the next one is route reviews and waste evaluation. So um, per the agreement, C R N R is supposed to conduct a route review for all of the collection routes. Um, there were two of the twelve that were missed for that that year. Um, and so that's why that received an unsatisfactory rating. Um, again, I can report that for this fiscal year, we're on track for all route reviews to be.
Good. That's always good news when you say it's I think you guys realize it though. Okay, is there a duty for those also?
Um, calendar year. We need to be included with any calendar year. So that uh, well, on track then. I'm sorry, I should correct that and say they were included last year. Since we're in January now. Um, the next item is the recorded damages and so uh, it's kind of self-explanatory for the amount of liquidated damages, but essentially there was pretty hefty payment requested of C R N R, one hundred and seventy to thousand eight hundred and fifty for failing to meet um five of uh items in five of the nine performance categories that are included with the. So we did submit that invoice to C R N R, um, we see payments in July of last year.
That seems pretty high to me. The contract is very black and white. Here's what they need to uh to meet, here's what they don't. We have all the documentation to back it up. We give them the documentation. We said, do you do you agree or disagree? And there's some, there's a little bit disagreements on that, but there's really no nothing to feud over. It's it's regarding performance and they fail on those performances, we gotta hold them accountable.
Is that part of the contract?
It's all part of the contract. It's all written in the contract. It's black and white.
Don't we have any flexibility with that? I mean, because are we the only uh agency that charges? Agency that charges?
No, Newport Beach does it too.
It's uh, oh, no, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the information, but seems that it's higher.
It's up to them, that if they want, if they don't wanna, if they don't wanna hundred, seven, seven, seventy dollars and charge them, then they need to hold themselves accountable and do better part of the contract.
Well, how's it going this year?
I, I, I imagine it's probably another high one.
I think some have this maybe, um. May do a little bit better, but there are some other categories that are gonna be evaluated, uh, only needing internally in the next month or so to kind of. Fully dive into it.
Is there one particular, I, I. There's gotta be particular areas that are. Really high. Can you?
There are, um, off the top of my head, I, I can't.
Yeah, I, I, I was gonna say. Let, let's take a look at where those. The big numbers are, I mean, it behooves you guys to look what that big number is in those areas. And what are some solutions? Um, I, I mean, it's nice to get, no offense, it's nice to get money back from, from sources, but. Um. It kind of sours the relationship in some ways.
And just reports, um, every three months or every month or? Annual, so. It was over a twelve month period.
Okay, I think last, uh, before the period started in February when the contract was signed, so it was just put short that Monday, a few days.
Would you meet with CRNR and discuss these?
We do.
We do.
Maybe that same committee, if you could meet with this also, I think it'd be wise to get your feedback from the board. I, I, I think it is important to know that that's kind of hard with the signs. Um. And maybe have some solutions while you're dealing with it.
I guess I would look to CRNR and say, hey, what are we gonna do that?
It, it's up to them, it's pretty clear what they need to do, and if they're not doing it, it's just follow the contract, it's just, it's very clear.
Yeah, I, I know, but I think it'd be wise to have the committee work with the final decisions on itself. Even though it's clear. And see who makes the adjustments, and, and we do that move.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, bring them to collections, I think it's good.
Okay, I think this is the final unsatisfactory item.
Right.
Um, this uh relates to missed pickups, so in previous years, the district had received missed pickup. Um. Information from CRNR and we had our Google, our missed pickups in Google that we were tracking. Um, at one point, I checked with CRNR to confirm that the number of reports, missed pickup reports that they were reporting to us were. Complete, because the number seemed a little white compared to what we were getting via Google. Um, I don't know if it was just misunderstanding in the way the question was asked, or the way the, the response was given, but. We weren't provided that information on further investigation, uh, we determined that there were in fact more missed pickups that were being reported. To CRNR than we were aware of, so for this current fiscal year report, we were able to include. Miss pickups that were reported directly to CRNR, in addition to missed pickup requests that were coming to us via Google. And so you can see the total missed collections for this before you turned in is one thousand four hundred and fifty-three. Um, which is significantly higher than the five hundred and thirty-eight that was reported. The previous year, based on liquidated damages or the threshold that we set. Anything over that threshold is assessed liquidated damages and this number is over that threshold, and so that's where this comes out. It's, we're using that as kind of an indicator for unsatisfactory, because that's the threshold that we're holding them accountable to, and they've surpassed that. It translates into unsatisfactory performance.
It's, you know, when you report that, uh, missed pickup, what happens, somebody reports it missed, but it isn't because they didn't put it out early enough. Or they missed the time, so we don't know.
It could, it could vary.
It could vary.
Do we take that into account when you give the totals?
These numbers are what are reported through Google and what CRNR document, I don't know if CRNR makes that distinction on their blog or not. Um, but on ours, a missed pickup that reported is a missed pickup regardless of the reason for it.
If we got someone that was consistently reporting missed pickups like every week, that, yeah, we're, we're gonna, is the person put out their carts in time? And we will send David out there, hey, go sit out in front of this home before the trash, see if there are trashes out there and carts or not, and so. Sometimes we'll, we'll, you know, when we get a lot of planes, it, it doesn't, it doesn't pass the smell test, and we'll send David out to go, go investigate.
Yes, Mike, can I ask my question? Okay, you guys, how often do you change your routes? Because in my complex, the routes are changed periodically, you know, like, sometimes they come early for the. Blue can, and sometimes it can be early for the green can, because how often do you guys change your routes?
You know, route itself, doesn't get changed, the, the, the sort of time.
Yeah.
Um, anything in the week might get changed.
But it just reminds, often in my complex. We get those tickets, because people don't put it out. They don't put it out the night before, they put it out the morning, you guys have already come by, planning to get charged and then pay them.
And that's why they should be.
Right.
Right, that's what, our code says when they're supposed to be out, our customer says Saturday.
People don't do that all.
Yes, well, if you hear, we do get, uh, a bunch of people that call in as self-identified. I missed the, you know, I mean, I, I missed putting my, the tier point, I missed putting my cans out, can you come get it? We don't log that as a missed pickup, or this, log it as a courtesy pickup and go back and pick it up, but they're, uh. Repeat offenders. They may get charged a, a go back fee, or a, or an additional data fee for the truck to go back.
Well, how, how do you charge a missed pickup fee?
I mean, how do you charge it? It, it's a return fee that the president would give directly to us.
That's.
Uh, other times we'll get people like during the holiday season that. They, I generated so much trash, you guys already picked up on Tuesday, I still have some stuff to come on Thursday, if we do provide that service, we're an additional fee. Does this report, wha- what was the cutoff on this report? Before or after rollout?
It was before, it was end of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, so nothing that happened during the rollout is included, it will be included in next year's.
Well, I think it's eight mixtures, this word, number's gonna go up, because of that, I think we need to. Have some latency in there somewhere. Because of it, I was, I was thinking about when people put their carts out, I know people that put their carts out when they hear the truck go by.
Yeah.
So, you know, they, oh, time to go put the trash out. Um.
But they move fast, because there's only, they can have one item now.
Yeah.
Because it's not like two, three.
Yeah, yeah.
And it goes. So, I think, that's why I think it'll be curious to see what they do, where, I think you guys, what the committee should have, you should be looking at this.
This might be, and now, appreciate that.
Um, it might be a good idea that we could put some of these things. In a newsletter that goes to everybody.
Sure.
And then that way they say, this is the following that the senator would appreciate. And.
We're gonna need a, Scott, we're gonna need a six-page news, a news box the next time.
I think if everybody knows, they should get it out the night before and comment.
Email newsletter.
We do both.
What's it called, do you get the newsletter? Because you're in most families.
Maybe, um, do you have carts, do you have our carts, no, we have, we have, it's CRNR, but we have a dumpster.
You have a dumpster, that's why, yeah, that's why, that's all under the city and under commercials. Okay.
Well, we still utilize large trash pickup and other things, not just cart pickup.
That, and that's part of even cities agreement with, with your association or, or property manager.
That would be an individual agreement that would have to.
Think that's all the red marks?
That was all the unsatisfactory.
So let's talk about the blue ones real quick, um. Again, household hazardous waste, if we know how valuable that is, you know, I think that's one that, um. And the wrong one, your, first one's customers.
Well, I'll start at customer service.
Go ahead, go ahead, I, I, I jumped ahead again.
So we just wanted to highlight the customer service guys that made it to the science center district, she's fantastic, she knows above and beyond on a regular basis. Um, we have just nothing but one thing to say about her, we're very thankful that she's our representative and we hope that she will be her own, Leslie.
I, I think also part of customer service, the excellence, um, a, a lot of credit has to go to their drivers. I mean, I, I've seen, and I've told you this, Mike, I've seen drivers. Get out of their trucks.
Yeah.
And fix cans or like there'd be a, a bag of trash or something. Um, they don't have to do that, they can leave that sub sitting there, which then get a result in a phone call if you were to that, to us or to them. Um, I, your drivers. For the most part are spot on with that, I think that has to be part of that customer service.
I agree.
I've seen drivers go across the street with carts. But, or have nothing but a lane or whatever.
Yeah. Even though some of them fall over or. All right, lids are open. Okay, I'll go.
So the next.
Mike, go ahead.
Any other questions on or comments on that one before I move on? Okay, so HHW, I actually do reference Leslie again, uh, with this program, I mean, one, we see minimal complaints. Uh, with the HHW program, but she also does take extra care, I've noticed if customers have questions or uncertain about. What they can have, like that, what, you know, how do I think of how it presented, she kind of takes the extra time to learn about them and explain that, so that's very appreciated. Um, but the program overall works very well. And then the other item is the annual compost event, we had it this last, um, year at OCC for the first time, and it, the. Event was fantastic, we really appreciate Mike's. Uh, you know, insider knowledge of, of the campus and, and he and his team did a fantastic job.
You have some experience on our shift, that was.
Yeah, that was great, I hope that we can utilize that same location.
Yeah, it was, you know, Estancia wasn't bad, but did you see more? More people saw it, I mean, people driving down the street saw it, they probably went home and got their shredding and brought it back. So, yeah, it was, it was, I really love that, and. Again, that was such a beautiful library event between CRNR and our staff. It really worked out.
And OCC, they did a, they were very accommodating.
Did you get KOCC for that?
No.
Do you have some connections there too, that?
I mean, it's. And it should be in the.
We, we just, yes. We picked up shredded materials, our shredding. Uh, would you, how could we expand that event? Um. Or would you recommend not to do that?
To envision that, right?
Well, I mean, to other types of recyclables or batteries or. I, I think if you pick up batteries, I think, uh. People in special uniforms. Take a couple of members to place, so that's probably all the question.
In the past, um. The, the district did do one, um. Did I remember what it was?
I think we did two.
HHW. Collection that they have, and was actually also.
I was still at the other side of it. For the sound, I'm like, yeah, I remember that, remember that Scott?
Yeah, yeah, it was very well done, yeah.
How was your, the?
Menace expensive.
Yeah.
Was it for you guys?
Well, for you guys.
Special. Especially trays and uniform.
So we paid for that.
Yeah, it's the county that, that provides the operations, so we have to pay for that.
What was the cost then?
I don't know, it was, it was over ten years ago.
Was it part of the grant?
No, no, I think it was something we budgeted and paid for, so it's extremely expensive. Uh, we find, we believe the, the door-to-door, um, house has ways more, more effective, and it's more convenient, right? And they don't have to put it in their cars, they just call up, put it out in their curb, and it's picked up, very convenient. Yeah, and I think we, and as far as battery recycling program, there's, there's tons of options for, for people, again, the door-to-door house has ways. Um, there's the, the schools, um, competition, uh, for, um, collecting batteries, and then you also have the drop-off site at, at, uh. On the leash of this, uh, I think, and if, and if, um. Uh, when OCC Recycling Center opens up, I think they were collecting batteries for us too, so if I remember correctly.
They, yeah, OCC was providing more batteries.
Yeah, so that's another option, yeah, yeah, so that continues, there's another, another option.
Well, Scott, will that program continue, then we, did we?
I think we did, I did, I think we might, we might have funded some of that, so I, I need to find out from them if they're gonna operate again, we can, we can talk about it.
District did.
Yeah, I think you're right.
We get, we, we get credit.
Yeah, it's household hazardous waste, we don't get, you know, it doesn't count diversion. Yeah, I know, I know, I know, just remember, household hazardous waste, if that counts as diversion, just gotta handle that, yeah.
Yeah, so another question from yesterday, there are twenty-one schools participating. Our party is not on the list, no, this is one, I think it was one last year.
About team.
I have to check, I only checked.
Cause I got them like a problem. I'm sure College Park is.
I believe so, but we can get the list, you.
Knowing, knowing, knowing the PTA and my daughter, I'm sure.
All right, Davis, sorry, um, yeah, they're, they're strong, she's a, but somebody beat him last night.
Yeah.
Uh, private school beat him, no, it's private school, they, it's private school.
So the annual compost event, that was, when we picked up, um, gave the good.
When we had the shredding truck and then the bags of compost available?
Well, the compost was made available during the.
Bag compost, yeah, every, um, customer who drove through could take two bags of them.
Yeah, at the end, they were giving away. I, I gave her.
All right, let's next.
I think that was the last, uh, excellent, everything else was satisfactory or not.
I guess the goal for next year is to have more blue than red. And some of the suggestions that have come up to your prepared, we can, we can certainly. All right, anything else on the performance review? Okay, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Like, thank you, Oliver. And if you find a holiday closure?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, giant, uh, Diana Wodorski, our administrative service manager, be given this report.
Thanks for asking, and welcome. At Asher, where the district currently observes holidays on December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth and January first. While remaining open to the public from December twenty-sixth to December thirty-first, between Christmas Day and New Year's Day. Staff is proposing to the public, to, to close to the public during the period between Christmas Day and New Year's Day. Historically, many employees take vacation during that time to spend time with family, friends. And this combined with peak cold and flu season that typically occurs during this period. We have found results in a significant reduction to the workforce and land, um, absences. The district, um, offices typically experience less foot traffic during this time and, um, phone calls during this time as well. As much of the public and contractors are also on holiday break. Uh, if the board were to approve this closure during this period, employees who prefer not to use their, who leave time. Will have the option of working, uh, we would just be, again, would just be closed to the public. Waste wire employees would adhere to the standby duty schedule, they would remain on call to address any emergency situations that may arise. And then all solid baseball calls and online requests would be forwarded to CRNR to ensure that they're addressed promptly. Uh, other local agencies, including the cities of Costa Mesa and the city of Newport Beach, are. They closed during the holiday, that same holiday period, the city of Costa Mesa is closed from December twenty-fifth through January first. While the city of Newport Beach operates half day on December twenty-fourth. And then remains closed through January first. Both cities require employees to use their approved leave time, although employees also have the option to work with their supervisor approval. If the district closes for that time period between Christmas Day and New Year's Day, there would be. Uh, not, there would not be any additional financial impact, because employees would either be working or they would utilize. Their approved leave times such as vacation, floating holidays, administrative leave. Or they would even take leave without pay if that was what they chose to do. Um, and so staff is recommending that the board directors approve the post office closure from December twenty-sixth. Through December thirty-first, so I open it up for discussion, if you have any questions, let me know.
Do we have any? Spreadsheets or logs or demonstrating what kind of activity we've had over the last few years?
And we have kind of, we've kept an unofficial log for the past few years, we, we just engage how it is, and so. We've, we've asked the. We've we've asked the front office to 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 keep a log and it's the volume is 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 down in the phone calls and.
From from my personal experiences. Prior to this summer, that that time between Christmas and New Year's. Was, I mean, the public. My public tended to know that. Nothing's gonna get done. Um I I we did have a standby system. I mean, calls came in for claims, emergencies. So you've accommodated for that. Pretty much overall and and what you're recommending. What, what I'm curious about is, so if a person has. Ten days vacation, I'm just throwing a number out there. They would save five days vacation time for that time. Or four days, whatever the time, but they would have to use their vacation time.
That's, that's yes.
Or leave time they had.
Yes.
If they had no leave time, then they could take the time off and not be compensated.
Exactly, or they would, they could choose to work. I think and and we found that because the city of Costa Mesa is closed, oftentimes people assume that we are closed as well.
I think I was gonna ask that I I I've had. You know. The city is basically dead that week. I mean, I have emergency services, things like that, so. Okay, I think that's, that's all I have been involved.
Do you have any idea how many people? Would be in in the in the status that Mike was asking about. Uh that they wouldn't get compensated.
On the top of my head, I I don't think that there's many employees that have used all of their approved leave time. But there are some that that may be close to it, but again, they have the option of working. They don't have to. We're not forcing anybody to use their approved leave. We're not saying you have to use your vacation time. We are giving the option. They can work.
What if they don't use their leave time by the end? Is it accrue or does it go away? It accrues, right?
It accrues, vacation accrues, um floating holidays, those have to be used, used, but those don't, that doesn't roll over. Um administrative leave does not roll over. That has to be used too. It doesn't.
Six times in total.
It does. Because our, our, yes, our sick time, but they don't use sick time unless they actually were sick. But our our sick leave converts to CalPERS um credit.
Yeah, I would be opposed to this, like a person, that's six efficient days of free time. No, if you get paid for it still.
Well, basically what it is, is 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 employees are taking a vacay, they pay vacation leave. We're not. It's, there is no financial impact because we're either paying employees to work. Or we're paying them their approved vacation hours, so there isn't.
Saying I would rather go with a period, period.
Approved, yes, yes.
Giving up six days.
It's not, well, it's not a holiday. It's it's like. Yeah, yes.
I would be opposed to this, opposed.
Based on, on.
I wouldn't want to give twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty, thirty first off.
Yeah.
Cause you guys are off every other Friday, which you. Would you, we, the staff be willing to eliminate every other Friday so?
Probably no.
And and we don't know yet how many employees actually would opt to use their vacations. Oftentimes we uh employees. Prefer to to work. They don't want to because they don't want you to say, oh, you have to take time off during this time. So. Or we don't even know, maybe half the employees, but I think what we have found can be a problem is that. So we, employees have to request their time off, vacation time, any time off ahead of time. And so we plan for that and then we know how many people are going to be in the office, so we're not short-staffed. But then around the holidays, it seems we run into the problem that people are sick, it's flu season, and then we are short-staffed. And so. That can be difficult also trying to staff and that's another reason I think that we found that if we just close to the public. But again, say the front office or say um. You know, seventy five percent of employees say, I don't want to take the time off. They're here in the office working. We would just be close to the public to uh, you know, and just in anticipation that we may be short-staffed because again. Well, I I've been here before where there's two people in the office because when when there's, because people are sick.
They're also fighting by the field staff being on at the same time break.
If they choose to be, they can, yes, but.
Say, we, I think the field staff needs to be in place.
Yeah, well, and they are, so they would adhere to their standby schedule. We would, we would still be responding to um any sort of emergencies.
Standby central schedules. I don't know where everybody lives. It takes time to get the work from where they're at. If there's a problem. I'd rather have staff here ready to go. First, I mean, that's six efficient days. If you don't want it, the staff's not willing to negotiate. Not every other Friday would be something I would do. It's more important to be off at first occasion than it is to come in every other Friday. That's, I'm this hour deal. I'm not sure about it, Board members, you know, but I think it's something we have to be concerned about. Is it possible to get that, what I asked initially about activity during that time period? Can you get those numbers or?
I can look back, yes.
Yeah, I think she's, you know, they uh, you know, the represents at least what we have encountered in the past.
Yes, we can.
And typically, um. Historically, do you have a lot of people save their vacation for that last week and 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 do you have a percentage of? Like, you can, can you give everybody vacation if they're requested that?
No.
Yes.
And that's, that does become a problem too because then, you know.
Well, there has to be a core. I I guess what I'm looking for is a correlation between. The activity you're saying is non-existent, right? And how many people would typically be off?
Yeah, and I guess what I. You say close to the public, you know, I'm not. Sure what that means. Uh does it mean that they don't go in traffic?
Right.
Exactly.
No phone calls.
Yes, and then for those that do not want to use their approved leave, they would still be here working in their offices, but it would be um. Without the foot traffic.
Foot traffic is dealing with the.
Contractors.
Staff back here.
It's contractors.
Contractors or?
And and with the city closed. That's why we don't see there'd be a lot of contractor activity because they can't get permits from the city because city's closed.
Oh, the city is also closed?
Yes.
Yeah, the city, they're they're closed all for two weeks, three full weeks.
Both, both cities, Newport Beach and Costa Mesa.
Okay, so can we get that? For the, why you don't read this back to the board?
Yeah, we bring that, sure.
That or.
Yeah, we bring another study session. We'll go to the next, next study session, yes.
Okay, so you guys have direction?
Yes, thank you.
Questions, anything else on that? And any oral communications regarding your comments? Anybody? Okay. Thank you all very much. Mike, thanks for your attention.
Thank you.